We call this meeting of the North Reading School Committee to order at 6:30 PM. In accordance with the provisions set forth by the Governor in July of 2020, we are able to conduct this meeting both virtually and in person in a hybrid format. We will be conducting that tonight. We're at the Bachelor's School, and we are also available for streaming over the Internet using a hybrid format. First order of business tonight is for the school committee reorganization. And so I would just like to start to see if there are any nominations for the positions. First position I would ask for is the position of Chair.
Dr. David, I would like to nominate Scott Buckley for the position of Chair.
We have a nomination for Mr. Buckley as a Chair. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Rudloff. Do we need to do a roll call or can we just do a...
I guess if there are nominations.
Are there any other nominations?
Look at me.
It's just chicken.
Alright, we'll do a roll call. You can do a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Buckley as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Buckley, pass the ballot.
Thank you very much. Now, open nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Mr. Margolin for Vice Chair.
A second? A second. Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, we have Secretary. Nominations for Secretary.
Who is it?
It's Diana.
No, it's not me.
No, she's a legislative representative.
I'm a legislative representative.
Who is the Secretary?
I think you're the Secretary.
Diana is the Secretary.
Oh, you're such a good Secretary.
You're so great.
I may make a motion to nominate Jeff Friedman for Secretary. Doing such a spectacular job.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And then nominations for Legislative Representative.
I will nominate Diana Botwell.
Second.
Okay, move the motion. Now, any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations, everyone. Okay, moving on. Public input. We start. Does anybody that has any, anything they'd like to say? We ask them to keep it to three minutes, but is there anybody online that wants to be recognized for public input?
I believe so. Just give me a moment, I've got a lot of windows open now. Too many windows open.
Mr. Maloney, are you on?
Sorry, Jeff. Were you looking for any comment public?
Yes, is there anybody that wishes to be heard?
Nope.
Okay, moving on. Student report. We are fortunate to have Cassandra, right? Cassandra Fitz. No.
Piper.
Piper. Piper here. She sent me a thing. I was like, I think that was Cassandra. So, Piper.
We changed it today.
She keeps changing it on me. To get the student report.
Hi, everybody. My name's Piper. For notable academic matters this week, we have AP exams are all this week, and they started halfway through last week. National Honor Society Ceremony is this Thursday. MCAS testing for grades nine and 10 is the 16th and 17th. And Student Recognition Night for the high school is on the 18th. For notable fine arts matters, the Senior Art Portfolio Show is on May 8th through 19th. So, we've got stuff going on. Notorious has a festival at Schlesberg this Friday. Stephen Sondheim nominations for Masters Piven are May 15th. The middle school participated in the METG. It's Massachusetts Educational Theatre Guild for their show, Little Prince. They won a Gold Star. They got nine acting awards and a sounding music award. For notable athletic matters, softball plays in infield tonight. Cheer and field hockey tryouts are this week. Madison dance set the school record for the javelin at Weston High School last week. And June Lavoisette set the 400m hurdle record also last week. Boys tennis plays five matches this week at the Forum home and Lions away. And baseball coach, Mr. Archibald, earned his 100th win. For other announcements, the senior science fundraiser is still going on. The athletic and community service opportunities are listed on the school website. Those are due pretty soon. And youth tutoring is still every Wednesday after school. And as I said before, senior and junior community service hours will be delivered. So, we've got some stuff to do. For my student work report, I would like to show my costume portfolio for my advanced tech theater class. It is for the Stephen Sondheim Awards, which I mentioned earlier. But everyone has the opportunity, or at least all who participated in Piven, or in this case, the advanced tech theater class, has the opportunity to create a portfolio for some aspect of technical design. And I am the student manager of Masters, so I got to create a costume portfolio for all of our costumes in Piven. And it is our, I'll turn and show it here too. And it basically shows all of the visions and color palettes, and then we get into each specific, like drawing for each character, and what kind of our vision was, and then what it turned out to be. So, yeah. And it will be submitted to the Stephen Sondheim Awards, so to see if Piven can win any awards this year.
Excellent. I know Masters are coming later, and they're going to discuss this, but since everybody might not be staying, you want to just give us a quick overview of what the award ceremony is about?
So, the Stephen Sondheim Awards actually take place in Connecticut, and Masters got to enter that competition. It's a competition through all of Connecticut, and they take outside school submissions to. It's a high school musical and, like, theater festival. So, if any of you guys know what the Tony Awards are, it's like that except for high school. So, this year, four of our freshman Masters did Piven, and we got the opportunity to submit our show to Stephen Sondheim Awards, and hopefully go down to Connecticut to see if we can win some awards.
Great. And I think the performance arts are a crown jewel of North Reading. And so, I joked at candidate night that, you know, not many schools have, you know, the reigning state football champion and drama club champion, the state champion at the same time. So, it's pretty impressive. And I was at the middle school one because my son did it, and it was, I think it was the first time in eight years that they had participated. So, they were very excited to get rated gold, so it was great. Any other comments, questions?
That's great. And Piper, are they, is there a recording that they submit from one of the live performances?
Yeah, so we recorded, on one of our four nights, we recorded the whole version of our show, and we submitted that to them. They kind of watch it, and then they look through all of our portfolios, and they can produce and submit.
And the costume work that you are submitting, that's work you did ahead of the production?
Yeah, so as we go through our entire, like, building the show process, we just create plans for portfolios after, so we can kind of see our process and see how things change.
And I know some of it, just for the other people here also, some of the courses we've added over the last few years specifically been for fine arts, some of the theater courses, and it seems like you're taking some of these classes. Is something that you want to pursue more when you get into college?
Yeah, I think right now at least I want to go into kind of technical design and state.
That's great.
Have you picked some schools to look at, or?
Not yet. Not entirely sure.
Well, that's all. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. And as always, you can stay as long as you want, or you can leave if you want to as well.
Since we've talked about that, should we?
Yes.
Since the request for the trip came in late, we need to add this to the agenda for later on. So, I'd like to move that committee vote to add consideration and a vote to approve the Masters trip to Connecticut to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. This has to be unanimous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
So, we'll add that to the end of the...
Correct. We'll go through that afterwards.
When they come here.
Perfect. Okay. Now, I guess we are ready for the Bachelor's School.
Yeah. Do you want to do a couple other items?
I mean, are they ready yet or not?
Are you ready to go?
For Ontario, it's great.
Is everybody here or not?
I just think we're waiting on...
You want to do the photo?
We can move to other things. Well, Neil wanted to get a quick photo, I think. Neil here? Neil, do you want to get a quick photo for a second? Okay, we're going to take one quick photo because we want to be in the transcript, so.
Do the budgeted option.
So, we can jump around a little bit.
We had a picture of you self-avenging and the five of you.
Oh, boy. Where am I going? It's here.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
No pressure, Scott.
Yeah, get out of here, Rich.
What you do looks nice to me. I like the color.
He's practicing for graduation.
We're in pictures. I know, we didn't get a memo. Should we go, like, with not such a horrifying background? Is this like...
Yeah, well, let's...
How about against that wall?
Okay, see?
There we go. You ready?
I think we can, I think we can make it work.
Got you. I want to keep you guys here later than you need to be, but we can do other things too, so.
I think that means...
I don't think you can see any comment.
Just watch your head.
Well, welcome. Thank you for being here. I'm thanking for having the opportunity to highlight some of the things that we do here every day at the Bachelor's School. I introduce our student participants tonight, but before I forget, I just want to take a moment and wish all the educators in the district a happy Teachers Appreciation Week. I write the memo on Monday morning and send it out to my staff, and I don't think a week is long enough. I think we need a little bit more time to really show the depth of appreciation that I know I have for all the teachers in the building, all the parent professionals, all the support staff. Incidentally, it's also School Nurses Appreciation Day today. So, our school nurses, Mrs. Resga and Mrs. Dale, who fills in from time to time. We really do appreciate all the effort because we need to be here today a bit more for our teachers. And I ended up here tonight to prep our students, to show you what we do each and every day. A very big thank you and an appreciation for all that they do. I heard from the high school report of the accolades of the fine arts and the wonderful achievements that they've had this year. It's also one of my things that I enjoy. When I was at the middle school, I used to go hide in Miss O'Brien's room because just the work that she would do with her students. And oftentimes, I sneak up into our art room and check out for a little while and just watch the kids work. So, to keep with our fine arts, we had our fine arts night here on Thursday night. We've been very well attended. If you do get a chance after the meeting, just to walk around, Miss Bill is put some, brought some work down into the main hallway here for you to enjoy. She's actually going to speak in a minute. She's, I told her I wouldn't say this, but she's very nervous to speak. It looks extremely... I asked Mr. Muse and I asked Miss Bill, just to highlight and to showcase it. Really, just want to give you a little snapshot into the day of the life of what we do here at the Bachelor's. We're going to have a musical performance to start, and then Miss Bill's going to just say a few words about the visual arts. And then we have an academic project that our secondary team has worked on with the students, pretty neat, in collaboration with our digital learning staff. And then we have a special presentation and award at the end that I know I'm actually very excited about and, you know, and excited to share with you all. So, without further ado, Mr. Muse, I'll let you set this up for us and take it away.
Here we go. Ninety-one, looky blues, ready? One, two. Oh, one. One, two, three. So, one of the things that I've always enjoyed doing with younger students is teaching, teaching jazz style and swing, swing style. It's one of the things that I think gets left behind a lot as we're just working on notes and rhythms. So, it's one thing that really, really brings me a lot of enjoyment. And I hope that our students can use that, can carry that on into middle and high school. Our wonderful jazz programs in the middle and high school. So, it's one of the things that I just love to introduce now. Get it in their heads that this is a really fun thing that you can do, basically on any instrument, and they can continue to enjoy that as they go into our upper programs. But another thing that I think is super, super important for us as young musicians is just learning to play in what's called a chorale style. Chorale style, something that's very slow. It's not always the favorite thing of young students, is playing really slow and beautifully. But I hope that over the course of the last few years, we've instilled at least an enjoyment, or maybe the very least an appreciation of playing beautifully and not just fast and loud. And in fact, at Fine Arts Night, these students chose, I think, I didn't choose, they chose. They chose to perform this chorale, which is from our book. It's called Celebration and Honor. Here we go. Celebration and Honor. One, two, three. So, that was the slow, pretty stuff. But of course, everybody has a little bit more fun playing something that's fast, loud, aggressive. This is one of the performances, pieces that we performed on our Fine Arts Night, sorry, not Fine Arts Night, All-Town Concert, and we'll also perform it on our Screen Card Concert. And it's loud, fast, and aggressive. It is appropriately titled Dragon Slayer. I don't write them, I just play them. Here we go. So, got all the setup to do. Good? Here we go. One. One, two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Muse. Just before you sleep, we threw off students through Mr. South's class, correct? So, I was here tonight just to support our students. We have Drew, Bender, Lucas, Barrett, Tracy, and Drew Pinky. Thank you so much for coming tonight. That was awesome. It was a great performance.
First, what grades are they all? Are they all sixth graders? Or fifth graders? Fifth graders? All fifth graders.
Also, we have on Friday, our first grade show.
Actually, Mr. Muse, wait, before Mr. Muse sneaks away. Sneaking? I actually want to compliment Mr. Muse because I have seen him in a number of things. I've actually had a few parents reach out to me to say how excellent you are doing, how big of an addition you are to the district. I know that you help out of the high school. I see you in a lot of the other events as well. And so, I just want to, you know, it's the first time I've had the opportunity to just, you know, say thank you for all that you do for the students here because it's far more than just here. You volunteer at the high school. I see you in a lot of other performances as well. So, you've been a really great addition to North Reading over the last few years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you both.
I would say this Morgan is working on our first grade show, and they're performing, I believe it's Thursday morning for parents, and then Friday for the school. So, first grade parents will come in on Thursday morning and watch the first grade show. And then we have our spotlight assembly on Friday morning where we highlight our spotlight values, and we're giving that agenda to our first graders so that they can perform for the rest of the school. And I say that all the time, and I think that's one of the most difficult things for a student to do, is to perform in front of their classmates and schoolmates. And, you know, it's just, it's a wonderful thing to see, really. It brings a smile on my face. And I really do appreciate the work of all of our teachers. I know Miss Bill's probably not speaking to me right now because I said that she was nervous, but I just want to, just to say a few words about Fine Arts Night and some of the work that's going on.
One second before you go, because now it's my turn to say something great. My daughter started the year saying, "I want to play trumpet. Got to play trumpet." Which we did our best to dissuade her from, saying, "They're easier things to play, much easier things to play," which, as a parent, you learn pretty quickly that's exactly the wrong way to dissuade someone. So, she started and pretty quickly started playing every day. Just a little bit, just a minute or two, saying, "This is what I learned in class." And I got to tell you, by the end of the year, she's now playing with friends, and she loves it. And we could not possibly be happier. So, thank you so much. We very much encourage, in our house and other houses do the same, a lot of music. And we love it when she picks it up and smiles and says, "What am I going to, you know, here's one to play for you." And I will say one other quick thing. She started, I mean, just started transcribing notes on her own in the music so she could play it easier. And my wife, being much more musical than I am, is just sitting back saying, "How did you learn to do that? Where did that come from? And we know that you're a massive influence." So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're a really hard audience, Miss Bill.
Yeah. We're brutal.
Um, anything you can make us know, that's enough, let me know. So, we recently just had our Fine Arts Night in my house. We have four hundred and sixty-five session. Do her table a little bit. So, a few students had one piece hanging up. We used this hallway in front of us and also the hallway outside our music room. And then I also did a Mary Blair-inspired mural on the staircase leaning upstairs. We read the book Pocketful of Colors, and she was an artist that was starting this year. She was actually the first female hired by him. And she played his movie, Listen To Her. And then he called her and begged her to come back. And she ended up working on one, which is an icon name at the moment. And she designed this ride. The ride called, it's a small mural. We did a artisanal, and it's remade, artisanal portal. So, each child in the little sign made a square or a different shape, and we put all of the shapes together to kind of recreate her ride or her sculptures that she would make. So, this is really cool. Could be go pluck the staircase or kind of like walking up into the sculpture. It's really cool. The next one, please. We also had probably five or six different projects from every single grade. Not going to tackle of all of them, just a couple of the fine ones that we did. This one is the third graders did a fish printmaking project. We read back to the old fish tale that Japanese fishermen would go out, bunch of fish, come back and try and explain how big it was, and then they would read that. So, they started bringing out washable ink with them, and they inked the fish off and actually made prints of them to bring back to record what they caught. Whether this was kept to make into sushi or whatever else, or release back to the ocean, it was totally safe by the ocean and them. So, I have some different proper fish that we eat duck. Maybe we can use real fish in the future. Right? I'll hold it up, right?
We'll find it in the butter.
Okay, yeah. And we would, I have like five or six different ones, and the kids were allowed to make some prints. We used bubble wrap to make a cool texture of that. The next one. And then for fourth grade, we did a Rory Flichstein-inspired pop art project. And this was one of my favorites because they had to choose a positive word or a word that describes them. And I had them sit down, pick something and write it down. And then I sent them around the room to talk to their classmates and say positive things to them or a word that describes them. And then they picked one of those words for this project, and we talked a lot about how to make the word really pop and the bright colors contrasting to the background. And my last one, please. And then this was one of my other favorite projects, is we looked at the work of Tim Burton. And students were able to portray themselves as Tim Burton characters. And I had paint, crayons, markers, watercolors, bow, charcoal pencils, all different types of papers and examples. And they were really allowed to make a lot of decisions about how they wanted to portray themselves, what color background they wanted to use, and creating their frame. And then when you guys leave this room, if you take a right, you're going to see some work from the first graders and all of the kindergarteners. And if you take a left, I got down some of the work upstairs. And there is a sign that kind of explains the project. And we've artists those inspired from, along with one example.
Wow.
Thank you.
Good job. So who is inspired by tacos? Is it Mr. Sutherland's children of guessing?
I think it was the tacos we said.
So I was just going to say, I've seen a lot of amazing art in the district in the last few weeks. The district art show that was up at the high school was amazing. And what you're showing here is amazing. The fine arts, the two-dimensional, three-dimensional digital arts don't get as much splash as the performing arts do, but just amazing work going on. And I love that the more you can get it out into the community, the better. So it's great to see it.
Thank you.
See, again, I get to say that to daughter stars. This is great. Aside from Fine Arts Night where she was playing trumpet and singing, she couldn't wait to go upstairs to show what was going on. And she was doing pop hearts. Great. I will say you're way more original than Royal Lichtenstein, but different discussion. But this is fantastic. Just the creativity for it. Kids love it.
Thank you.
And not only do they love it, they get into it. And they produce fantastic art. So thank you.
Thank you. One of the things I learned is that there are options that you give them if you're working on a project. The work that they're going to do it, when getting it, they're not going to want to be good.
Right. Oh, fantastic.
I think what's also great too is that there's always learning going on outside of the park. Whether it's, you know, the technique of, or the, I do not need to use the right term, but whether it's a pencil or paint or crayon. There's always sort of, the fish, I was actually, I observed that the fish shot a lesson. And actually, it's a history I can explain to the students. And it made it fun, made it interesting. And they learn that, you know, this actually comes from, you know, there was a purpose. Even though it might have been, you know, they were ragging over the size of the fish. There's actually a purpose behind the technique and all of the different arts from around the world. Because I think it's all of yours to introduce students to different arts from around the world. And, you know, I just, as I say, I go up there and I hide. It's a nice calm, deep place for our students to learn. And, you know, that's, that environment is created by Ms. Dope and our essentials teachers. So we really do appreciate the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many, how many times do you get to see the kids a week? Is it just once?
I see them once a week for 45 minutes. So I work four days. And on those four days, I'll see all of the first grade through fifth grade and one of the kindergarten classes for 45 minutes. Sometimes we usually all just go over. And then someone else teaches Wednesday morning, so we have the kindergartens.
Okay, all right, great. And like, for example, this Tim Burton project, how many of these can you get in front of, different projects can you get in front of each class per year, would you say?
I think it's like anywhere between like five or six big ones and then some smaller ones that are maybe only like two classes or so. But then once we go in like those student houses or assemblies and field trips, I definitely start losing a lot of time.
Okay, great. I love it. Great.
Dr. Daley?
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Muse, who I've had the chance to observe over the years. I echo everything that the committee said. They've done a wonderful job with that program. That was a great performance. Ms. Dope, I've enjoyed visiting your classroom. She's also, she's a newer teacher to the district. She's really grown a lot and she's gotten involved. I want to share that she's taken on some leadership responsibilities, working with our Fine Arts and Performing Arts leaders. And we're doing the grant program for the Arts Vitality Index that we're looking at district-wide programs. And she's really stepped up to help represent elementary. So I want to thank you for that as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So I'd like to call up our second graders now, accompanied by two of our second grade team of teachers. We have Drew Finkis Day and Mrs. Chaprata to support our students. And we have Blake Krebit, Callie Donovan, Eva Kukel, and Addison Sutherland. And they are going to, better than I could, explain this project all around this North Reading. I think you're going to really enjoy this. Right, guys?
Good evening. My name is Colleen Chaprata, and I am a second grade teacher here at the batch. On behalf of my whole team, I'm so excited to present to you our All Around North Reading project. The second grade team is able to plan with Miss Lindsay, our digital learning specialist, to extend our curriculum to our digital learning target H P. This ensures that we are hitting the second grade standards that we implement in the classroom and enhance them with a project-based learning. It is truly a highlight of our week. Every single week, Miss Lindsay. The students find these projects that we complete extremely engaging. During digital learning, we are able to use the universal design of learning, or U D L, to give our students choice in their learning and the projects they create. For example, students are able to use apps like Book Creator to create and design projects using the pictures, fonts, and backgrounds of their choosing. For our All Around North Reading project, students were able to use U D L by having the choice of the location they base their project on, usually choosing a place that they have a personal connection with in the town, like Nyx or the Flint Memorial Library or Rires. Students worked together to collaborate on this project. They discussed different strategies that they use, practiced being flexible, and understood that all students bring different strengths to their group. This project really showed how our second grade students can persevere. They worked hard throughout the entire project, and we're so, so, so proud of them.
Hello, I'm Catherine Fay. Thank you for being here this evening. In digital learning, students take the knowledge they have learned from lessons in the classroom and apply those skills into real world situations, such as giving accurate directions to locations in North Reading. They do this by using robots and green screen technology to make a video tour of North Reading using mapping skills. Our goal, the goal of our project is for students to be able to demonstrate the ability to read a map, apply cardinal directions, as well as write and speak in sequential order for an audience. This project encompasses many of the standards on our new Standards Phase Report Card. It also provides us, as teachers, an opportunity to make informal assessments. As we all know, some students do well with paper pencil assessments and others are more successful with hand-on or verbal assessments. Projects such as the one you were about to see tonight provide students of all learning styles an equal opportunity to show what they know. We are very fortunate to have such a knowledgeable digital learning specialist as we have with Chris Lindsay. She supports and enhances our students' learning in exciting and engaging ways. Please welcome our second graders Addison, Eva, Blake, and Cali.
Good evening. My name is Addison. As I can tell, I go based on our All Around North Reading project. First, we had a sign at the team, but first patiently wanting to talk about it. My team picked one because that's the place we all invented. Then using a iPad, we worked together to find a good picture of our location. We learned that when we stand up on a green screen, it looks like we're standing in front of a wall. Isn't that cool?
Hi, my name is Eva. And I'd like to tell you about Phase Two. In Phase Two, we used open maps to plan the path from where we started to where we were going. Next, we used a marker to draw the path on a map. The Ozobot has a sensor on the bottom of it that follows the colored path. Then we worked together to read the street names. Finally, we mapped out the direction we needed to travel on these roads by using cardinal directions.
Hello, my name is Blake, and I'm going to tell you about Phase Three, the riding phase. After we have figured out the street names and car directions in Phase Two, we then had to write a script. We worked together to build a description of the location we chose. We want to make sure to include some of the great things we find at our shop. Finally, we put the street names and car directions from Phase Two into step-by-step directions to get the punchline point to the next location. It was a lot of work, but it was also a lot of fun.
Hi, I'm Cali. Now onto Phase Four. In Phase Four, we have to decide which team member is going to save lives. Then we practice saving our lives together using expression so we didn't sound like robots. Once we go right in the front seat, recorded us in front of the green screen. We also learned that you can't wear green in front of the green screen unless your body will disappear. My classmates and I had some of fun creating all around North Reading. Now it's your turn to see how all of her work came in.
Welcome to Miss Faye's second grade class called North Reading. To start our fun tour, first, we will go right on Route 62 and drive west. Then we will go north west on the same road. After that, we will take a left to travel south on Route 38. Finally, we will reach our first location, which is on the right side of this road. Do you remember where the first one has it off? If you have, come to the right one. They have clothes wet everywhere and they even have a sweatshop if you're hungry. They have sites, they do use mom if you need to do mom. For our next stop, we'll take a left at other part of the lot and go west on Route 28. We'll take a right on Route 62 and drive southeast and east. Then we will turn left into the parking lot. We have a lot. If you like to read, you'll find lots of amusing books here at the Flint Memorial Library. It has four levels. On the fourth floor, there are legos and comfy cushions. You can relax and read. You'll find you'll find lots of great adventures at the Flint Memorial Library. Now we're heading to our next stop. We'll take a right out of the lot and go west and then go west on Route 62. Then we'll turn right on Route 28 and head north. Finally, we'll turn right into the parking lot. Where we are spent at Cowabunga's. They are lots of fun dancing houses here. You can have your birthday party at Cowabunga's, and they have claw machines with candy and fun prizes. Come have fun at Cowabunga's. Are you ready to go to our next stop? To get there, we'll turn left out of the parking lot, onto Route 28 and travel south. Next, we'll turn left onto North Street and continue east until we reach Home Street. We'll turn right onto North Street and drive south. Finally, we'll turn left on Route 62 and left into the parking lot. Enjoy. Cowabunga, welcome to Luke's Place. You can have the best pizza in the world. You also have frozen soda and sorpling adventures. You'll have a fast press fix. Tonight, to our next stop, we will take a right out of the parking lot and go west. Then north west on Route 62. We will turn right on Route 28 and go north. Finally, we will turn left into the parking lot. Welcome to Jokers' Lot. When you walk there, you'll see a bunch of scary maps. After you pay, you can get a free piece of candy. This is a great place to shop for your next Halloween costume. To get to our next destination, we'll turn left and head north east on Route 28. Then we'll turn right and go northeast on North Street. Finally, we'll turn left into the driveway and learn about another fun stop in North Reading.
Hi, this is Olivia Goldfoss. It is one of the best golf places in North Reading. They have eighteen clubs of golf and a driving range. To feel like offering, this is the place to come. To get to the next location, we'll take a left out of the Cardinal Lodge and go east on North Street. Then we'll take a right and go southeast down Central Street. We will turn left on Route 67 and head east. Finally, we will turn right into the parking lot of our last stop. Now we have a lot of guys kind of based on. Riders has lots of delicious foods and drinks. You can buy things like grilled cheese, Gatorade, or Yum Pi. They have even benches to sit outside and eat with friends. It is across from the bachelor school. We've been having a great time in our tour of North Reading.
Running cardinal directions was fun. Using the robots, I liked working and to write the script. Working together made it easier because we talked out our ideas.
I liked using the marker to draw the path for the Ozobot robot to follow with helping my group figure out how to explain the directions. It was hard. It was a hard project that took a lot of team effort, but it was also so much fun.
I like being able, I like being able to write and read a script with my group members. Designing which picture from our location to use for the green screen was a lot of fun. Using the robots as a team was fun because if you made a mistake, you could figure out the problems with the group members. I also was thinking jobs to everyone in the group.
Thank you.
I'm going to start.
Yeah, go ahead.
That was the best thing I've ever seen. That was absolutely fantastic. And you answered my questions. I was going to ask the kids what their favorite part was, and you answered my questions for me. My girls did a version of this, I think. It's continually modified and changed every year. And it's just, what an amazing way to use Ms. Lindsay and to use all these different skilled layered in on top of each other. It is so fantastic. I can't tell you how happy that just made me. And I think all of those places should give you guys gift certificates or something. That was like the best marketing video I've ever seen for North Reading.
I was just going to say, first of all, you've worked a great job with your speaking up here. It was amazing. Very, very clear, and you clearly liked the project. So I can't imagine what else you could squeeze into this project, right? There's science, math, writing, public speaking. It's amazing. So it's, it's like a perfect project.
No, this is great. It's great to see somebody come together. I'm just really hungry now, but, no, it's wonderful.
They can tell you how to get to next.
I know. I know. I eat you. So, great job, guys.
Great, great job, everyone. Great example of our digital learning program and the cooperative nature with our teachers, our classroom teachers, and our digital learning team. And students, what a great job. I'm so proud of you. Great job.
I have, actually, was that all, all of that achieved during digital learning time? Or was their classroom time layered in with like the script writing and things like that?
So all of this was, the whole project was during digital learning time. So it took place over a couple of different weeks. But all the skills that they needed prior, we did in the classroom before we started the project. So we already talked about cardinal directions and that persuasive writing piece before we got into digital learning.
Thank you.
I mean, I stumbled across this project. I think you were on the floor in the library with the Ozobots.
Fascinating. Fascinating.
This is, this project, just the synergy of all of that, that work in the classroom along with collaboration with digital learning and technology. Even that, you know, that digital photography and video editing and that's just, you know, those skills that, you know...
I definitely wasn't doing this since I was a grade.
What I could do in the classroom and separate and be able to experience that and have that skill is phenomenal. You know, really the work, the collaboration, the knowledge is great and it shows in that part of it. It's just, you know, when I saw it, I'm like...
Presentation worthy.
I love it. And I just wanna say a quick happy teacher appreciation week to two of my very favorites up there. And all the teachers of the batch are my favorites. But I was lucky enough to have both of these amazing teachers. And I did not cry at all when my girls finished with you.
Well, they both laughed and both fainted because they were very nervous.
Teachers aren't allowed to be nervous.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And we now have one last piece of great news to share with you. It's kind of, I guess, a culmination of a long storied career. It, you know, but I know the person does it for the athletes. He does it for the learning, for the process of the learning, the research, the work, the teamwork. So I'd like to ask Mr. Cassell to come up, speak to you tonight about Project Forests and the Explorer Vision Program. Mr. Cassell has been running that, I think, for over twenty years?
Almost twenty years.
Almost twenty years. And we have a majority of everybody in the school who knows, but we have some exciting news. And we have our Project Forests team here to present their projects and share their news and to celebrate the accomplishment. So Mr. Cassell?
Well, we've been doing Explorer Vision here at the Bachelor's Co. for many, many years. Explorer Vision is a national and Canada included competition to make, to create and imagine a better world. The idea is to put together a team and have that team not only solve a problem, but define one. This is work that is mostly done at a college level. But the National Science Teaching Association has built a program and a plan to make it work down at the lower levels up through fourth grade. We compete in third grade. We compete in a category called kindergarten through third grade. And the idea is, they don't give you, they don't give you a problem to solve. They say, do some research, explore. Kind of what they say, it's explore, create, vision. And this year, we had a team of four students who imagined a problem. They researched that problem in meetings after school with team leaders, parent leaders, and found this problem and said, now let's see, how might technology, math, science, solve this problem within the next ten years? It's a marvelous opportunity to be part of a true problem that you define solving would make the world a better place. They came up with a project called Project Forests. The last word, forest, is in capital letters because it stands for something. Could I ask the team members and the parent leaders of the team to come up, join me here? I'm their coach, which let's be honest, that's a very technical background kind of thing. I stood behind and just kind of made sure everybody knew where the game was played. We have a video that they made as part of the Explorer Vision Competition. It's a very complex competition that will tell you about Project Forests. Why don't you guys come over and stand right here so that we're not blocking anybody? We wouldn't be blocking you. Okay? And here we go.
Oh, we are Project Forest. We're trying to solve the problem of how to clear wildfires. A wildfire is an uncontrolled fire that has a block that will generate danger to plants.
Draw a circle, but they go for the fire. They'll go away for searching, rescue, and see how far the wildfire is.
Project Forest. And our solution is to help by themselves to draw fire extinguishing cords onto the fire to put it out. Also, our team made a plan to fight it at the end and help put out the fire. Inside these walls is a fire extinguishing chemical. And what's really cool about that is it's actually a really good fuel item. So after the fire is put out, we're gonna send the drone back. And the bombs are gonna be loaded with seeds and we're gonna blow them up.
These are the light vehicle models. And here's the camera and there's, you know, satellite colors. The panel, all the drum and the amp. And then there are sensors all around it so it doesn't bump in, just bump into things. And that's the most important because if it's bump into it, they...
Their solution addressed the problem of fighting forest fires in places where water needs air. It's very dangerous for firefighters to be out there physically. And they did it. Show them your prototypes, gentlemen. With drugs that could be directed out to where the fire was and safely fight it by dropping chemicals that were safe for the environment and later could be used to rebuild the forest. They could drop seeds. So they solved this whole problem. Well, a lot of work. During their entry, and we now would like them to make a very brief presentation. Mr. Aloni. And at the three, the four of you would bring that over to Mr. Aloni. They were awarded one of six regional awards in the category kindergarten through third grade in Canada and the United States. Quite an honor. Congratulations, congratulations. So I can't tell you how pleased, let me put these up here, gentlemen, so you have a dance break. I can't tell you how pleased we were when we learned that this team had won such an honor. And then, of course, we discovered that the next phase to compete in a national competition was excruciatingly difficult and hard and required a lot of effort and kind of recharging. Right? They submitted all the things that were necessary. At this point, I'd like to ask our principal. To me, why don't you come around here? I'll stand behind you guys. Face the audience, he's gonna come around. So...
That's good, that's good.
And low and behold, they're for one of six regional winners competing for a place in the National Explorer Vision Competition. If we had drums still, we could have... These students, their parent leader and their coach were awarded second place nationally in the 2023 Explorer Vision Competition. We will unfortunately not be in school in early June because we will be in Washington, DC. And doing a lot of very powerful things with the other national winners. So there are only two national winners in the kindergarten, or kindergarten through third grade category. Here is the second place winner. It is a phenomenal work. And we have the plaques now. Hopefully.
And the plaques read Toshiba NSTA Explorer Vision. Toshiba, the National Science Teaching Association, are relieved to award this national winner certificate of merit to Logan Thad, Logan? Julie Morrison? Ben Huber? Huber, sorry. And Ethan Huber? And Catherine Huber? The Metter? And Bill Cassell? For your team leadership role in LD Bachelor 2023 Toshiba NSTA Explorer Vision Competition. So I believe it's June 7th, 8th, and 9th. So June 7th, 8th, and 9th, the team and their parents and Mr. Cassell travel to Washington, DC to participate in the national award ceremony. Very proud of their work and the recognition that came along with it. Oh, join them.
Hold for the paper. Hold for the paper. Lots of stories today.
In any case, we thank you for this. It's also very pleasing and proud to be in front of you for this presentation.
Absolutely.
And I thank you for having us.
That's great.
Thank you.
Honored to have you here. I just, one question is like, what's next? Who's gonna make this? Are you guys gonna be on Shark Tank? Getting your funding? I mean, it's an important project. It's a good idea.
This program, the way it's set up, teachers working in a small group, it's just like if you were in California in one of those think tanks. That's the kind of work you'd be doing. You'd be finding the problem, researching the problem, researching all the alternatives, all the possibilities, and then doing the hard work of grinding it down to getting something to work. Thank you all. Team leaders deserve all the credit for the...
All the work for the parents.
Mr. Cassell, this is last year, and I think this is a really nice setup.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
I really quickly just wanna say, I'm so happy to see this. I was in your shoes a few years ago. I was the team leader, or parent leader, for my daughter's Explorer Vision team. And we were interrupted by COVID. So we were not able to proceed with the usual ceremonies. We were able to do some things online, if you remember, Mr. Cassell. But I'm so happy you all are going to DC. And you're gonna have to, we're gonna live through you. And it's so exciting. We're so proud of you guys. That's amazing.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're gonna draw another plaque for this project.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you, guys.
I just wanna say just for a moment, thank you, everyone. Thank you, parents, students. It's such an honor. You're so lucky and you're... I just wanna take a moment to thank Mr. Cassell. He's downplayed his role here, but in bringing this to our, to our school and our community for so many years. I know that we have a chance to acknowledge our retirees later this year. But I wanna say thank you for what you've done for our students, for our staff, for always challenging me. Mr. Cassell is the teacher. When you walk into a classroom, you know, for an after-school meeting, and he'll put something on the desk and ask me to solve it or to figure out why this conductor is not making the right circuit. He puts articles in my mailbox, anything to do with brain-based learning. He's always had my ear on that and so many other things. And you've really been a great colleague to work with. So thank you for all you do for kids and for me as well. Thank you. Mr. Maloney, is this an overnight trip that we need to approve as well?
Would you close your mark, please?
It is, so we could add that also.
So I basically did tonight what I do every day here at school. I get out of the way and I let, you know, the wonderful people that work here do their job. And I do an exceptional job. And I'm so grateful and appreciative to be in this position and to, and to see all of the great work that is done here at the Bachelor School. And I hope this, you know, little snapshot of our day was enjoyable for you as it is for me. And really just to say thank you again to the teachers who are here tonight. Ms. Oak, Mrs. Fay, Mr. Frieda, Ms. Dow, I know, you know, you were just here. It's time, and it's very much appreciated that you are here to support your students. Mr. Muse, I think, who's left. Mr. Cassell, for all your work. You know, Dr. Daly said it went better than I could, but I have a good fortune now for just a little, you know, two and a half years to work. If you would just really see your process and how you inspire learning and the curiosity of the young minds. I really enjoy it and, you know, we'll have other times to wish you well when you retire. But I think I said it at the other ceremony, but maybe there's a position for the Explorer Vision liaison, you know, when you retire. We'll keep that in the back of our minds. And I also wanna say a special thank you to Chris Lindsay. She hides behind the... I'll get her the directions to Bill, you too, because I know she loves to golf as well. But thank you for all your work behind the team. Because, you know, along with the work that she does in the classroom, teaching every day, it's the stuff like this that, you know, she has a huge support. So thank you so very much. I appreciate you and the work you do. So that's, that's all we have for the day. We'll be in months and months. Appreciate you all, appreciate your time and this opportunity to showcase what we can hear at the batch.
Excellent presentation. It's always the highlight of our day, having, you know, these presentations. And I'm the only non-batch parent here, but you still always feel welcome.
There's a real school connection.
There we go.
For a while, we were there together.
No, it's great, it's great. It's great to see what the kids are doing. And it helps us, you know, when we're, when we're trying to, you know, figure out what, you know, where, where we need to fund, where, you know, what's happening. It's, it's just really nice to see, you know, some of the things in action, like things like UDL. You know, something I'd never heard of, UDL. And I heard about it, you know, I got on the school committee. And then just seeing some of these things in action, it's just, I don't know, it's so much different than it was when I was in school. And it's just, you know, it's nice to see the real projects and hear from the students. And the thing that I'm always most amazed at is how great that students all speak. I mean, every school we go to, whether they're second graders or, you know, 12th graders, they're amazing speakers here. They're, you know, great at doing these presentations, and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Yeah, we'll do, we'll do two-minute break, let you guys all... Okay, I'm gonna welcome the Mascar's in.
It's been like, you know, two or three weeks since you guys have been in front of us. What have you been doing?
Nothing.
Okay, so Dr. Daly's running the slides, I guess. So we heard Piper give us a little bit of a preview earlier.
She did my job. How much depth did she do?
Oh, I did nothing.
Go ahead.
Congratulations to Aven yesterday.
Thank you very much. He was very happy.
So this is just our proposal for the Mascar's trip to the Stephenson Award in Connecticut. So I'm Mason Murray. I was gonna do, you guys said I'm the president of Mascar's. I'm just gonna do a brief rundown of what the Sonnet Awards and just kind of digress a little bit more than Piper did. So you guys all know what the Oscars are, right?
Yes.
Well, the Tonys are the Oscars for musical theater and plays that go on Broadway. So the Stephenson Awards are basically a branch of these high school Tonys... So the Stephenson Awards are basically a branch of these high school Tony Awards held in Connecticut. Why it's not in Massachusetts and why we're competing in the Connecticut one is because Massachusetts did not participate in any sort of national level of the high school Tony Award, which are called the Jimmy Awards, which I'll talk about later, because of COVID restrictions and other sort of guidelines. So this year, we took it upon ourselves to submit our musical, Back in December, Piven, for the Connecticut Awards, which are the Stephenson. At the awards, we'll be presenting 10 categories. Some of those include best musical overall, best choreography, best actor, best costume, best sound, best lights. Those are just something to review. Daly will go over some of them later and show you even a portfolio. And then out of all of the actors and actresses that are nominated for their role, two of those will move on and go to New York to participate in the Jimmy Awards, which are the Nationals. So they're held at Juilliard. And the winner of the Jimmy Awards gets a $25,000 scholarship to NYU's tuition program. So there's another scholarship involved, which is the JDA Hubie Awards. JDA Hubie was a budding actress in Connecticut, and she did a lot for all sort of Connecticut theaters around the area. She unfortunately died of cancer when she was 21. So they made a scholarship for her and gave it to two students and it's for $1,000. The events at the Stephenson Awards, they do a red carpet entrance and then performance by nominees and awards. So that's what I have for you guys. That's got moves.
Hi, I'm Lucy Wagner. I'm also a senior at the Mascar's. So I'll just talk about some dates with you. A week from today, at 3 o'clock, we all are jumping out of our seats. Can't wait. We're going to be watching a Facebook Live of the nominations being announced for the awards. So that can be for any of the categories that Mason said for who gets to go down to Connecticut and participate. So the event itself runs from June 1st to the 6th. So the first and the fourth is a week just for best actress or actor. So of one of our leads, there are five people who have been nominated from our show as a leading performer. They could go to a boot camp with agents, professional actors, people who work in the industry. And that's just a great opportunity for them. But otherwise, on the fifth and sixth, anyone participating and wanting to go to the Black Tide Gala with the awards and the performances for nominees, they can go to that. So as of right now, polling those Mascar's students, we have 35 that are likely to go. And then for adults, we have Alison Kay, Nathan Tulow, Ben Owens, Dave Barber, Peter Kane, and Kristy Bowman. So those are going to be our chaperones and some of their directing team for the musical. The trip is open to anyone in Mascar's who participated in Piven, but we do have to realize that it falls on the day of senior prom. So the seniors did unfortunately have to choose. However, it's just as exciting of an event for some people. So it's just which they wanted to do, which they were participating in. But there was no pressure for anyone to go. We just think it would be super fun to perform as many students as possible to have that opportunity. So we would be staying overnight from Sunday the 4th to Tuesday the 6th. So for workshops, so those are hosted by Sacred Heart Group at Black Rock Theater and Sacred Heart University. And that would be with other professionals from the industry. That includes actors and actresses. But also, we can send four of our Mascar's to participate in opening and closing performances. And those are usually medleys, mashups of songs that they do at the gala. And that is super fun, and you get to meet people from other schools participating. Then there also will be special scene rehearsals, and you get to work with a professional orchestra if you're nominated. Like, if we were nominated for best musical, we have to perform them or we could practice with a professional orchestra. So that's very cool. And then we just have meet and greets with agents, producers, actors, anyone who works in this.
Hi, everyone. I think you guys already know. I'm Emma Curran. I'm the secretary of Mascar's and I'm also the stage manager. I'm gonna be talking about transportation. So on June 1st, there are five roles in our show specifically that could be nominated for the best actor, best acting, for the best actor, best actress position. So if people in our show were to be nominated for that, they would have to go down to Connecticut on June 1st. Because there are only five students who are eligible to be nominated, Ms. Kane, who is our former director, she's right up there. They will be taken up in her personal vehicle, which is something that is very nice. They will stay all the way through the 6th. Because as Lisa mentioned, there are workshops all day in Connecticut through Sacred Heart. On June 4th, if we were to be nominated for the best musical option, we would have the opportunity to perform one of our scenes and songs at the actual gala. And in that scene, we can take 15 students to go up, to go down the 4th. And in that case, Mr. Owens will take one of the school, the high school students' vans, which seats 15. And then on June 5th to the 6th is when everyone gets to go, because that's the actual start of the gala we get. Right now, as Lisa said, we have about 35 who are interested. We were planning on taking the school buses, the, like, the school vans. And the, there's two of them, we have two of the school vans right now, and they can take up to 30 kids. Not, like, that is, like, not including the people who would already be up there. If we were to be to take more kids, we could, there are other school vans to take more. We could take, like, personal travel with any of our other students. Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniel Gersonette. I'm a sophomore and I'm a cross-직원 Mascar's as well as a lighting designer. So as Lisa had mentioned before, the award ceremony is just on another blade, so we're here for theater. Regardless if we're nominated or not. This ceremony is like a black tie event, very formal dress. And it will take place on June 5th at the Junior Theater in Connecticut. This ceremony is especially important because our production leader and technical crew chiefs compile the sound, lighting, costumes, set design portfolios, kind of to encapsulate the preparation and inspiration for all the work that we have together. Especially for our student run. And then it also opens up a lot of opportunities for our vision, for them to be nominated for the best in their category, as Lisa also mentioned. And also they watch you since the beginning of future. I believe about two weeks ago, we submitted some of these portfolios and... For example, Mrs. Sophia, she kind of put together her notes, preparation, kind of opinions she was going for for the sound design of our show. And yeah, it just was a great opportunity for our technical aspects as well, as well as our performing aspects. And it's another, yeah, great way to celebrate theater. And we aren't nominated for that.
Hi, my name's Sophia Nago. I'm a sophomore and also a historian in the Sound Designer Mascar's. So I'll just be summing up all of the cost, aspects, and all the details and everything. So for the hotel, we stay at the Courtyard Marriott in New Haven, Connecticut. We have already reserved 15 rooms, in case everything goes cold, but hopefully we stay in them. So, and there will be three to four students in each room. That will split the cost of the room that will be added to the total. Food buys, breakfast on Monday will be at home prior to going to the school to be able to leave on the bus. And then lunch will be bagged, students will bring it themselves. And we'll eat it whenever we arrive or on the bus right there, whatever the time around. And then for dinner, since we figured it was a very fancy, formal event, and we would go as a group to a fancy place and get a nice dinner. So we went to Jack's Bar and Steakhouse, where we get a four-course meal. And it's also within walking distance of the theater that we'd be at. So that was perfect for us. And then Tuesday, the next day, for breakfast, we'll be going to the place to be, which is also within walking distance, so that was very helpful for us. And then tickets for the award ceremony are only $45 for students and directors. So everybody has to pay that fee. And then in total, everybody will be paying $250. That will be the whole cost of the trip. And so that's it. If you guys have any questions, let us know.
Question. Diana.
So I know you said there's nominations for, like, leading actor and actress. Are there nominations? I just wasn't 100% sure for, like, lighting and sound and things like that as well.
Yes, so there are 10 categories that we can get nominated. And it's best actor, best actress are kind of linked to one. And it's lighting, sound, set design, orchestra, choreography, directing, stage management. I think that's both of them, I think so. And supporting actor. And so there are, on the 15th, there will be nominations for every category. And they are eligible to get nominated.
Awesome.
Do you know roughly how many, like, how many, are there 10 per category? Or is it not really known?
I don't think it's, 19 schools got chosen. 19 schools.
19 schools. So there could be up to, probably not up to 19 though. But yeah, okay. Just like, just like the Oscars.
Not for each category, I guess.
Okay, all right. Awesome. So such a great opportunity.
Well, I'll just add a couple of quick things. First, I don't know if we see you since the state championship, but congratulations if we haven't. You know, what I would be really interested in, you guys have been, I mean, Mascar's has been active for a few years now. I don't think you guys have ever been more active than this year. And I would love if you guys will do it at some point. I would love to see kind of a calendar of how much you did this year. Like practices, all the different trips you did. I mean, just to really see that. I mean, I think we've had, yeah, we've had you here a number of times, but it would just be really nice to see the commitment. I mean, because it's, I mean, because you go all year round. I mean, it's far more than any sport, you know, here. And I would just be really curious just to see on paper sometime, you know, all of the different trips, all of the different things that you've done. And if you add a notorious, it's even more.
The only, the only way they get through this is to not think about that.
You have a choice, like a sport, to pick a season. So it's based on seasons. So it can't be pick and choose. It's not, they don't have to participate in anything you're about.
Oh, that's great.
I would play varsity basketball, but I decided I was gonna hold my $200. I was gonna do this instead.
There you go. Well, that's my other question. I mean, for the seniors, I had heard conflicting rumors about where Mason's going for my family. But like, where are the seniors, where are you guys going next year?
I'm going to the University Park, current in the Hart School for the Music Theater.
Congratulations.
I'm going to UCLA, the Music Theater.
UCLA, awesome. That was neither of the choices my family said. One of them had you at LSU and one of them had you somewhere else. So UCLA, so.
That's all where it travels. I love it.
Congratulations, guys. No, it's been, it's been an honor to see you guys, you know, so many times this year.
So much fun.
That's great. You might want to add in there Pepe's. I mean, if they're out of New Haven, you gotta get them.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will, we earlier approved putting this on the agenda so we could take a vote today. So can I entertain a motion to approve the trip?
So moved.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous. There you go. Good job. Let us know how it goes.
When do the nominations, are the 15th? How are we gonna find out? Is there gonna be some big announcement?
Down in this case, I'm saying you should come down there.
Totally, I wanna kind of rub shoulders with you guys.
We should post it on the Instagram and the Facebook.
Okay, great. Good luck. Good luck.
It might be right at 3 o'clock. Yeah, or today.
Senioritis there.
It's through, it's through the Stephenson, Black Rock is the company that is helping produce it. So it might be their Facebook page.
Well, we can't wait to hear.
Great job, everyone. And Mrs. Kane, the kids may not be year-round, but obviously you are.
I am, yes.
So congratulations on an amazing year.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, guys. Okay. I have no idea where we are in the agenda, but let me kind of look through.
So we can go back to...
I think we did everything up front, right? Reorganization. Why don't we real quickly, for school committee reorganization, we have all the subcommittees. Does, since this committee hasn't changed, does anybody, does anybody want to get off anything that they have? That anybody, or do we want to just stay with the subcommittees we have?
Jeff loves evaluation, so. I'm happy where I am.
I'm good.
Everyone's good? Okay, do we have to do separate motions for all these later, or can we?
So make a motion to keep everything the same?
Yeah.
I think that's okay.
Okay. So we're gonna make a motion to keep the subcommittee assignments the same as last year?
I move that we vote to maintain the subcommittee assignments for the next year.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion. We have a second. You can choose to second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
I know, I'm looking at her head and I'm not reading. Sorry.
Okay, SEEM Collaborative and North Shore, we can, we're doing, you know, together. Whatever you want to do.
As a part of our annual business, we present the FY24 budget for SEEM Collaborative and for the North Shore Education Consortium. I don't know if there are any questions or discussion. We only have a few students that attend at each program, but the options are there. When needed, the costs are significantly lower than some of the private institutions. The collaboratives offer, they're great partners. As you know, we have through SEEM, we have our DEIB coordinator. We also have a UDL multi-district coordinator. Through those programs, they offer several job likes. They offer not only outplacements for students, but they offer in-district supports and programs. We've had English second language support. We've had counseling support. They sort of have a menu of options to do. So we're very happy to be members there. And I think that the budgets have slight increases just due to cost of living, but they are certainly well-managed. And again, I serve on the board of both boards. So I don't know if there's any questions? I don't, I don't have any questions on the, on the documents, but I just was curious and maybe the answer was in the documents. And I didn't look that hard. Are there any new initiatives from either of the organizations, either this year or the last couple of years, that are reflected in the, in the budget? Or are they doing anything? What's going on? What's new? What's happening? Sure, yeah. I mean, I'd say with, with SEEM, we're always talking about our membership, whether there's anyone new adding or leaving. And then I think a lot of focus on the collaboration models, the DEIB and the UDL. And sort of which districts are in on that? Is the model working? We presented, as you know, you were a part of it, at, down the MASE joint conference with MSS on the model itself and how effective it is. And I know that Ms. Barrows, in addition to working with us, is also sought after for some consultant work as well because other districts really are interested there. I'd say with the Northeast Consortium, the NEC, that the, they're really trying to look at some of the different programming. There's always a, there's actually a need for increasing programming. It's difficult to find some of the staff members. And so there's, there's always questions around space and around programs and around staff members to support those programs. But the student need is certainly there. I think everyone could see some of their highly successful programs to support a wide variety of needs. Everything from a recovery high school to really specialized needs for students. So that's a lot of what we talk about. And it's not really an initiative, but it's also, there's a lot going on with some maintenance of facilities. And that's what we've talked a lot about there. There's a great finance team that's done an investigation of, you know, really updating some of the capital needs at those buildings to make them ready for the future. And all of that is supported just by, what is there, do they have other sources of, what are their other sources of funds? It's due to tuitions. Just all the tuitions. Some, some grants available and some support, but it's mostly through the tuition. I know about 100% more than I did.
So when we had the, the Northeast Regional Tech come, they talked about one way they're expanding their offerings is to try to do things in, in different schools. And I'm just curious if there's ever, if that's ever an opportunity for expansion for any of these collaboratives as well? Because if they're limited by space, even if they could have maybe some of the, you know, programs run from SEEM or North, or North Shore, but they could do it at the actual school. I'm wondering if that's anything that, if it's ever been discussed or if it's a possibility?
It, it's absolutely possible. We actually hosted a SEEM deaf and hard of hearing program for the last 15 years or so at the Hood School. Recently, it's been relocated, we needed those classrooms and they've relocated. We had a SEEM classroom at the, at the middle school when I first started here that then transitioned, we took over the program here in district. So I know that both programs are doing that to a degree. Some of the needs of some of the particular programs may not fit the profile being appropriate in the school, and they need a separate setting. And each program is slightly different, but that is something that is discussed for sure.
And I would, I would just mention that we appreciate the more modest increase unlike, unlike OSD, which did a 14% increase in one year. And again, I thought it was 6.2, 7% increase at SEEM and 4% at North Shore. So a little more manageable than OSD's for the other outer district placement. so a little more manageable than OSD's for the other outer district placements. Any other questions or thoughts on collaboratives?
No.
And you don't need to vote on anything, right? We've appointed you already?
Correct.
Okay. School committee meeting calendar. I'll just, I will just start by introducing and pointing out that our policies do mention the second and fourth Mondays, and we do stay on that. There's been some public comment on us and the select board being on the same night, but I'll just point out that we are on the correct night. And so the agenda for the, the proposed meeting dates do, do the same. Any questions or thoughts on the item of the date?
Just, I think towards the end of the document, May, June dates, they start to say twenty twenty-three. I think it's just a typo. So the little school, the town meeting, am I right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
There are a couple of typos, yeah.
Then there's one Tuesday, is that because, I think, is it Rosh Hashanah?
It's Yom Kippur.
Yom Kippur, sorry.
Sure, yeah, the first, if I may, Mr. Buckley. The first, the Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, I, I have a commitment on the twenty-eighth and I'm suggesting the Tuesday, but that may be able to, you might be able to.
It's my anniversary, so.
The twenty-ninth is?
No, the twenty-sixth is.
The twenty-sixth?
That would be so exciting for you.
So we may.
I know, you guys, David could come, it could be really fun, or not.
So that one we can discuss as it gets closer to that summer meeting. As, you're correct, the, the other Tuesday meeting on the twenty-sixth is to avoid some of the holidays there. I tried to stay to the second and fourth whenever we could. Where, where I thought Diana was, was going was with May, it does get a little tricky. The reason why we're on the thirteenth, twentieth, I have to also work in the election. It has to be the meeting right after the election, which doesn't come up.
And it's Memorial Day, too, the twenty-seventh.
And then Memorial Day, so we move things around a little bit. I tentatively put in a, you know, an early meeting in June as well, ahead of a town meeting, similar to what we did this year, I thought that worked well. And I, I thought that the budget workshops prior to the meeting worked well also, so I scheduled it that way for next year.
That's great.
If this looks good, but thank you for, kid, there's a few other little ones that have already been updated on the website. I had the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three goal. I just did a quick sort of move them forward, and I think I missed a couple, so sorry. Thank you for catching those.
The only other question that I had, and I might look to Mr. Freeman on this, but I was trying to look at, you know, holiday dates as well, and Hanukkah is December eighth or fifteenth. Is there any issue with having a meeting in the evening during Hanukkah, or is that?
No, it'll be fine.
Would that be okay?
Yeah. I appreciate you asking.
Just, again, I wanted to just be respectful of your families' celebrations as well, so. Okay. Anything else?
I will make a motion to, that we vote to approve the calendar as discussed. On the website, but not in front of us.
I have, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous. My only other thought would be on the July one potential, we could go virtual, if we don't have a lot on that one. I don't know. I don't know if we want to do that one or not, but we'll see who's.
I had to pick one to do virtual, I'd pick the August one, but.
You could ironically do either of both of them.
And we, we can go completely virtual through twenty twenty-five, correct?
Yes, yes, we can, so we have that, that option.
Great.
Okay, moving on, minutes.
I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee meeting on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as written. Second?
And does that include the budget virtual?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, let me.
Oh, no, there, there are two different ones, so.
Yeah, so the open session minutes of the budget workshop scheduled for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
I think we have two separate meetings, right?
We did, yes.
We did, okay. So we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous.
Now I approve the open session minutes of the school committee meeting on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as written.
You're correct, you moved over.
I moved over. My head is pounding, so I'm doing the best I can here.
You have a second?
I second, yeah.
You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Budget update? None at this time?
None at this time.
Bids and donations, staffing?
I did have a staffing report, I just wanted to share a few items. Just wanted to bring that up.
And are these for next year or for the remainder of this year?
These are all staffing for the remainder of this year. Or, or that have happened since the last time. So we've hired, Ms. Laura Bantill is a district registered dietitian. Mr. Connolly did a nice job putting out something to the community. It's a great position, we're really excited, sort of a through Chartwell's multi-district type of position to really look at some of the, the special dietary needs of our students and staff. Gerson Vargas is a digital learning and IT support specialist, which it's not noted here, but Mr. David Barber moved up to become the assistant network technician. So we were able to, within our current positions, get a position that's been a part of NRPS twenty twenty-five for quite a number of years, which is that assistant, assistant network administrator position. The bachelor school, two long-term substitutes, Elizabeth Rogers and Olivia Kroll, and Rebecca Workman is the building substitute. At the Hood School, Isabel Valderras is a building substitute. Brienne Mahoney, Gabriela Alexa, and Abby Riccadelli as long-term substitutes. The middle school, we had Carol McHugh, who is a retiree, we'll be honoring her in June as well. And Humeri Aden is a long-term substitute, is a gender power professional. At the high school, Linda Burke transferred from the main office administrative assistants to the guidance office, and Tracy Jorgensen has joined us in the, as the administrative assistant in the high school main office.
Excellent. I have a silly question, but for the dietitian, we said there's special needs. Would dietary restrictions, are they in, you know, IEPs or any individual plans for students?
Very often they're in five oh fours.
Five oh fours?
Yeah, in different, in different respects. They, they may be, or they may be, you know, in some cases, it may be something that's just passed along through the nurse or, you know, depending on what stage in the, in the process it is. We've done a lot of work, Mr. Connolly's done a great job working with our school nurses, especially, you know, our lead nurse, really working on this with us this year to have a system within, as a student comes through the line, it kind of shows up just as a reminder. We have added some reminders to the staff and just to, you know, everything from gluten-free to lactose to many other allergies. So Mr. Connolly did join us, I don't know, Mr. Connolly, did you want to add anything about the dietitian?
Yes, absolutely, thank you, Dr. Daly. So, yeah, we're definitely excited to have Laura Bantill join the team. It's a position that we've been, you know, looking forward to kind of adding. And we, we feel it's really gonna just enhance the services that we deliver to, to students. As Dr. Daly mentioned, specifically in working with families that do have students with dietary needs and just menu development and just gluten-free menu development and expanding those, those options. And we think it's, it's really gonna be a huge benefit. So we're, we're excited to welcome her. She's been getting kind of activated to the team and, and has been kind of working with her and the government food services director to transition her these last couple of weeks. And it just, to me, it's another thing that the, the ability to have universal free meals and the, the fact that we have so much participation happening in the program and the revenue has allowed us to, to really have a position like this. And I think that's, we're really trying to use the additional revenue that's coming in to really just add, add value to the program. One way we're, we're doing that, so we're, we're excited to see what, what can happen from here with this position.
Thank you, that, that was my other question, is it funded through the, through the food, food program? So it doesn't come out of the general fund, right?
Correct, so it's being funded, she is a employee of Chartwell's. And we will kind of pay for the portion of the salary that we'll get charged back to North Reading. She's sort of working for the communities as well through the Chartwell's contract, and it'll be paid for through the regular account, which is the revenue that we're receiving.
Thank you, welcome to all the new staff. Bids and donations?
None, none at this time.
No grants at this time. Subcommittee updates, finance planning team met last week. Mr. McGowan, oh, you missed it, didn't you?
I was sick, yeah.
You're not feeling well. I think we, what do we do? We told, we did, I mean, went, went through the revenue plan again, and we talked about, talked about town meeting and how we want to present a town meeting, and a little bit there, what else did we talk about?
Did you guys come up with a format or like a, are you gonna have new slides or?
Well, I think, I think, yeah, we talked a little bit about what it'll look like, and I think the, the key thing is in the past, we just, you know, the omnibus article is essentially a five-minute presentation, this is the number, and everybody says we recommend it and we're in favor of it. This year, we're gonna do a little bit more and talk a little bit about some of the budget drivers, some of the things that are challenging, some of the ways in which it's being funded. And then I had said, well, maybe some of the things that aren't in there, but, you know, the finance chair was actually made a good point also about, well, there's always decisions to be made about what to fund, what not to fund, and we don't really want that to be the focus of it either. Where, you know, it's like, well, you didn't have to fund that, you could have funded this position or that position. So I think the, the key thing is just pointing out overall, while we're spending this amount, we're only projecting this amount for revenue, we're using free cash for this amount, we're using, you know, ESSER funds still, we're using, you know, fees and, you know, and then just, just showing a little bit more detail. I think it'll still be, hopefully, we're, you know, unanimous in recommending it, but just to give a little bit more clarity to the, to the town on, you know, how the budget's made and some of the challenges with it, so.
Well, I mean, we had talked in the past about this being a lead-in for what's coming next year. Is there anything specific we want to do to that other than provide detail about what this year is?
Yeah, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, we talked, we had a little discussion about the ARPA funds, which is gonna be, is being discussed right now at the select board as well, because the ARPA funds were given to the towns for COVID recovery. They have to be allocated to projects by a certain date, and it's coming up. And so there's been discussion about that. It can be used as revenue replacement, so one, one way to do it is to replace some of the revenue that we're missing, get it that way, then flow it through to free cash, and then it's unrestricted. But at the, but at that point, then it needs to be given, then it needs to be done through a vote at town meeting, as opposed to if it's a specific, specific project, the select board could just say, we're gonna fund this capital project.
Yeah.
And they only need three or five of them to say this is a need that needs to get done, 'cause Chestnut Street culvert, and they were, they were talking about some of the other projects.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, it's just the other way to do it. You, you assign it to the projects, then whatever isn't being used for the projects goes back into, yeah.
Well, the challenge, though, is that if it's allocated, once it's allocated, it can't be reallocated.
Correct.
So if you allocate two million dollars to a project and it only costs one point five, because, you know, projects usually go under what you request.
Of course.
But, you know, if, if you only allocate one point five of it, that other five hundred thousand dollars is just lost. And so, so Abby from the finance committee said, you know, her number one concern is just protecting the funds that we have and not, not giving them back and not using them, because there's a lot of different needs we have. There's a, you're on the capital project, you see all the different projects that we have that we could use it for. And so there was a discussion about that, and the select board was gonna be discussing that tonight about whether to try to protect it now and let it flow through to free cash or whether to just allocate it right now to something.
How much are we talking about? Four, five million?
Four, yeah, four to five million dollars.
I mean, ultimately, ultimately, what we're really saying is there's an opportunity to kick the can down the road one more year.
Well, it, either way, it has to be allocated pretty quickly, and, and it can't just be, you say that it's being allocated there, you have to get actual bids and sign contracts and things like that. And so depending on what it is, it will take some time to get those, the documentation in place to really say this is the number, and so, yeah, that's what they're discussing. It's not really a school committee position, but we, you know, finance planning team, we discussed some of the bigger, you know, financial implications of the town, and so.
Sure.
It was just brought up as a, as a discussion. And I had brought up the idea of an all-boards meeting, because we have that to discuss super last year. I think a lot of people here thought it was useful to get everybody together, and my, my proposal was maybe as many, many as twice a year. And so the first one potentially being sometime in the fall to kind of talk about what our goals, all the different boards' goals are for the year, to see if there's any, you know, overlap, that think we should be working together, and then maybe later in the year, you know, to kind of see how it's going. I think this, they, the people liked it. The select board usually sets their goals later in the fall, but they were open to potentially setting them earlier so that they could have their, you know, their goals done around the same time we do, so that maybe select board, CPC, finance committee, and school committee could all come together. Because, you know, we like meetings, we might have more meetings, but.
Everyone likes that.
But it, but it's good, because, you know, we don't want to operate in silos, and so I think it's good if, you know, certain projects that we all know about, because I think it'll help with the capital projects as well, with just, you know, everybody hearing about it and getting different feedback.
Sure.
And the, that was discussed at finance planning team. I'll say from that, I congratulate Leanne Gonzalez as being named the select board chair for next year, and Vincent Osteudo on his election win, but also being named the vice chair again. Upcoming subcommittee meetings, finance planning team is meeting on, this Friday, June second at eight AM. Athletic Subcommittee is scheduled to meet on May twenty-third at noon. Fine Arts Subcommittee is meeting on May twenty-fourth at three fifteen PM. So if you were on the subcommittees last time, take note, you're on them again. Administrative report, Dr. Daly?
Sure, I'm just gonna pass, so I'll start, start from the bottom. The Teacher Appreciation Week, as we mentioned this week. Parent associations have already done a wonderful job celebrating our educators and providing some very visible signs of appreciation. We're also grateful for everything that our teachers do and also for all those who take the time to show their appreciation. Wanted to do a shout-out to the North Reading Middle School One Act Play. The Hornet Productions Little Prince won nine acting awards, an ensemble award, a sound award, a music award, and also a Gold Star winner at the AMETG competition. It had been a number of years since they competed. I had the chance to see the performance on Friday evening, and the, the, it was really, really outstanding. And, you know, Mr. Buckley's son is actually one of the leads, he is the Little Prince. They, the students were incredible, and it was, it was quite a show, so I wanted to do a shout-out there for them.
It was great.
And Dr. Daly, I just interrupted.
Yeah.
The recovery, if you will, of the arts programs, especially in the, where are we? Elementary schools and in middle school over the last couple of years. I remember sitting in, in Fine Arts Subcommittee, even, even the beginning of this year, just with concern about how we're gonna get these things going again, but just trying to get a band together, you know, music lessons together during COVID, and all of us coming together as a nation, so.
It's, you know, I will give a shout-out to, to Ms. Ventulo, who was a substitute here. While she was here, she was running performances and then at the middle school, and then stayed on to do that there. She's been wonderful, and I hope there's a way we can continue to work with her, because to really to resurrect that, I know Allison and Carla would do everything if they could, but having the additional support, Mr. Muse others doing winter percussion, doing, you know, we are increasing these opportunities for students, and it's really great to see the work when they have the opportunity.
And I, I'll, I'll just jump in very quick, too, and say, you know, also thank the Mascar's, because there was a very low turnout, honestly, like for, you know, some kids came out, they had to change the show they were doing, because they didn't have a lot of students that went out, some kids dropped out. So by the time they went up, there was only ten cast members and one tech crew. So some of the Mascar's came down to help run the lights, run some of the tech stuff. So they couldn't be judged in those categories, but, you know, that was really helpful for them. You know, like you said, Ms. Ventulo stepping up to do that. When they won, Ms. Lister came over and met them at the, at the, at the middle school. I think they all really appreciated that. She was, they brought them into the theater, take photos there, and.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and I'll just say, you know, it was really good, because, you know, my son also got an individual award for The Little Prince, which was really.
Congratulations.
Sweet for him, so he was very excited, so, but it was good. But, but again, like you're talking about recovery, there was low, low turnout, but rather than just saying we're not doing it, they were like, how are we gonna make this happen still? For the kids that want to do it, at least get a few kids involved, and just the fact that they did so well with such a small cast.
Well, and this was the first year of One Act, so.
First year in eight years, I said.
Oh, in eight years, okay. So the fact that they, they did so well, and, you know, I think it'll just, the momentum will build.
Well, there, there were literally, there were people that played. Well, there, there were literally, there were people that played multiple roles in it.
Yeah.
Like some of the cast members were, you know.
Yeah.
Playing different roles and again, it was a bit simplistic.
Yeah.
And like some of set design, things like that. But again, they wanted the kids that wanted to go out to be able to do it still and whoever that went out for it, they looked at it hard, so.
And that works so well though for the One Act with the simple set and the, and even the puppetry, puppeteering.
Yeah, simple sets for One Acts.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But, but it really, it was just so many, so much talent there.
Yeah.
I often, I'm always blown away by Maskers. I feel like it's a professional show. With middle school, I'm, I always forget, I have to stop and think, these are 12, 13, 14-year-old, these are middle school students here and they're, they're really doing a tremendous job. I had a nice, I took my eight-year-old son and we had a nice existential conversation on the wall about ephemeral and life and it was pretty cool.
That's awesome.
It was a great, great play.
Well, and I'll say, I saw the fifth, I saw on Friday and then I saw it again on Sunday and they did better on Sunday, actually.
Yeah, great.
Like the Friday night was good.
Yeah.
But like it was even more crisp on Sunday and I stayed to watch a couple of the other ones and they did really well, so.
I was very proud. Just wanted to share, I have reported out to the community, there were a few incidents at the middle school most recently. I just want to share with the committee, you know, one, one instance of, of, of any kind of bias incident or we'll say hate speech, a word, a slur on a wall written on a desk is two, is one too many. And I've had parents come in that have been, you know, their, their child may have sat at that desk or seen something on the wall, they're personally affected, they're very hurt, the community's very hurt. I've had many people reach out. So we do communicate that out. I just think, I want to be clear with the committee that, you know, I, I think that part of the double-edged sword of the transparency is that you tend to sense that, you know, there's something happening every day and it's, it's getting worse and worse and worse. You know, I, I believe when I was a student, I would sit at a, every desk I sat in had graffiti all over it, every bathroom stall I went in was covered with words and gum and all those kind of things. I, I want to be clear, like our desks are clean, there's nothing on them. And then that something might get written, we respond to it right away, it's addressed. If we know who did it, it's addressed and we, and we work accordingly with those folks. So I think it's important that we balance this transparency and communication with keeping a perspective with what's happening. That said, as I started by saying, you know, one incident is enough and it really impacts many people in the group. So we are, as some questions have come up about what's happening and what we're doing, we can't always communicate discipline, but we can communicate scenarios and what would happen in these scenarios to answer some parent questions. So we're having a forum. I'm also going to work with Dr. O'Connell and address directly with middle school students tomorrow. One of the parents that I did meet with said, you know what, you know, it's time for you to, as superintendent, directly speak to some students to show them how serious the district is about this. And I, I took that to heart and thought, you know, this is a good opportunity. A big piece of NRPS 2025 is student voice and listening to them and showing that, you know, we do, we do care about what's happening and I want to hear from them. And I think it's all right for them to hear from me as well. So we are going to do something tomorrow and then something again soon with the high school as well. But just to, to clarify, things that I've communicated out to you before, but we also have our Hate Crimes Prevention Grant. This involves a training for district staff, a training for high school students, and those trained will then lead additional trainings. And, you know, the first idea that I had was we've got this grant money, we have a partner that we're going to work with, with Northeastern, and I asked them, you know, could you come in and do an all-school assembly? And they said to me that, that's not the right solution to really bring about change, to have an all-school assembly, which we do have. We've had a recent bullying assembly at the middle school. We've had a few things planned at the high school that we ran into some conflicts with the PAC, but we have things planned. So there is a place for that all-school blanket, but the real work takes time and it takes the commitment of some leaders that are going to really be trained to deeply identify what needs to change and to bring about that change over time. And so that is the work that we're doing through these smaller groups, it's like a 30 to one ratio. That's going to happen in June 1st, 2nd, and then June 3rd with staff. And the plan from there is to then roll out additional trainings that these folks will be able to lead. So we will have those opportunities from middle and high school to share their voices. And we also, one of our goals there is to provide clarity about the ways to report the incidents. You know, there are pros and cons to having anonymous routes, you know, I do hear from parents that, you know, this happens more than you're aware of. I still, you know, the best way that I want to encourage people to report things is through the proper channels, telling a trusted adult, telling the principal, telling your teacher. Because that way we're able to immediately investigate, we have someone we can talk to, we can talk to witnesses. But we are given some consideration to some other means to make sure that we're hearing everything and we're not missing anything as well. So, but that's part of what we're going to talk about tomorrow. My, if I, if I could sum up tomorrow, one, in one, because we are talking to middle school students, it's really the golden rule, right? Treat others as you'd like to be treated. It's, it's really at that level. But just explaining to them that, you know, there are some incidents. What, what, what I've understood from the most recent incidents, one, one of them is someone heard something on a TV show, thought it was, didn't, you know, a lot of times kids don't really understand what they're hearing and they write a joke down that they heard on a TV show that was meant for a specific audience. And then they write it on a desk and now it's perceived as, now it's in school and anybody can see that. And I think that's really, it's important for everyone to know that though and to know the context. So I don't know if there's any questions about this.
A couple of things. One, I really appreciate using these, it's just teachable moments because, I mean, everything should be a teachable moment, but turning something that is inherently bad into something that could maybe benefit the community, fantastic. In terms of, in terms of what you're seeing, you know, maybe it's too few in numbers to, to quantify. Have we seen an increase year over year of incidents? Is it, is there a trend or is it just not enough data or numbers to really do anything with?
Yeah.
Two to four doesn't really mean much to me, you know, but.
Yeah, I would say, I would say there's not a trend or an increase. I think we're seeing definitely an increase in how we're reporting it and, and addressing everything that's happening. And I think, you know, again, one is too many, but.
Right.
If, you know, if I were to say, do these things come up over time? I've been here for, you know, 12 years or so, it's, it's about the same as, as always.
Yeah, no, that's, that's gross.
And, and I think what you're seeing is an increase in students and teachers knowing to report it immediately, you know?
That's great.
And then I think certainly we're communicating out as, as a school and a district. We have a procedure now and some of that is based on guidance from the state level, some of that's based on parent feedback. When we met with some of our groups, as these incidents came up, they said, we need you to tell us and communicate out. So we've, we've done that.
And, and one of the reasons why I think that's really important is because no incident happens in Isipar. Every incident, incident is known to somebody and therefore it becomes known through the rumor mill, through social media, and, and then people find out about it that way and, and when they would have much preferred to hear it from the schools. So it's, that being said, now that you're getting the information, you know, you've got to, it's important to keep the context in mind as you're, as people are seeing these things, so. I mean, I totally agree with, firstly, I agree with the, the concept of communicating these things, the way you, the way you did this most recently, for instance. The problem is it, it tends to lead to a lot more questions, but it's fewer questions than it would be if it, if it was, wasn't reported, but it was, the news of it trickled out.
Right. That's why, I never want to be on the side of we're trying to sweep something under the rug, we're trying to cover something up. And, and the, certainly times when I'd say, well, you know what, maybe, maybe we stop promoting it or saying that it happened every time that it's happening, it doesn't seem like a big enough deal. But then when I, again, when I meet with those families that are, that are impacted and they, they describe what it feels like to see a word or for their child to see that word and they appreciate that we're acknowledging it, that we're moving forward, I think that's really important. But I do think there are questions to be answered. We've done this in the past and I do think a lot of the questions get answered at that moment and, and the feedback is usually pretty positive. Again, we, I think people understand, we can't tell you, you know, student A did something and, but I think if we give you a few scenarios to consider, you know, it's definitely a different scenario if a student says something to another student, that becomes more of the hate crime, right? And if it's more of a, you know, it could be a student explains what they did, sometimes we don't know who did it. I mean, so there's different levels of, of what we're able to do and what we're able to address. But it's always, what I'm very proud of is with our teachers to recognize it immediately and, and remove it. And, and so that other students are not seeing it and trying to limit and contain that. You know, people have asked, I will just share here, there was a, a symbol, it was a swastika symbol most recently, and then there was also the N-word was used. So those, you know, those two specifics, I didn't get into the details there, but I will share that out with the, with the parents that call. And any parents that call and ask a question, we can share it. It's just a matter of getting into how much detail we get into as we're still doing investigation. I can share those two details at the moment.
Hey, the only thing, I would, I would add a few quick things. I mean, I think, I'll reiterate what everybody else said here, I think it's important to, you know, be transparent, investigate everything, take every, every action seriously. I, I just also want to talk about like, you know, whose role it is to do what. And so I appreciate your leadership on this, Dr. Daly. I appreciate that you, you know, lead the investigations or, you know, ensure that they happen. I, I appreciate that you're the ones that are, that ultimately talk to the parents if they have questions. You know, you have called forums where people can, can speak. But I also think it's important to, you know, for people to understand what the role of the committee is and what it's not. And so ultimately, if, you know, parents are requesting that this happened or that happened, it's not the school committee's role. It's, a lot of this are things that are left to you, you know? What trainings happen to the district staff should be dictated by the superintendent and not by the school committee. And, you know, I, I think that's important. I think we can support you. I think we can support, you know, I say support you by going to the forum on Wednesday. Unfortunately, I'm going to be at the finance committee talking about the school budget instead, but, you know, I think we can try to support you the best we can there. But I think it's important for people to understand, like if there's, if there aren't policies that need to be updated, then absolutely we should be, you know, doing that. I think there's, you know, there have been policies in the past that have been brought to our attention, we thought, oh, you're right, we have to, we have to address that and correct it. But I do think it's important to just understand, you know, that, you know, we support you in making those decisions. I know that it's hard sometimes to figure out what to do, but just wanted to, I guess, say on the record that, you know, you have the confidence of the committee, we appreciate the way that you're handling these things, we appreciate that you are, you know, making sure that everything does get investigated and you're talking to all the parents and you're holding the forums. And I do think that's the proper way that it, you know, these, these things should be handled, so.
Dr. O'Connell, I feel, you know, we wish it was, you know, we'll say better circumstances, but we actually like that we've arrived at this idea of me having a place to speak to students once or twice a year, you know, through their homeroom forum. And, you know, I, I was able to speak to high school students about their student, their civics projects, Mr. Buckley was there with me as well. I was able to get, not only with civics project, but I was able to get some other feedback on a few other things. So I really like that, you know, optional meeting during power block for anyone that wants to come talk. So we're going to do that very soon at the high school as well, and that's something I want to build on in the future, so.
I actually shifted gears slightly because you mentioned that. I think that was really interesting. So we had, there were some students that reached out about the civics project and with various questions, but one of them was about fees, which everybody knows I love the discussion of. And so, and they actually then asked for a follow-up meeting. And so Dr. Daly and I went in again and it was very interesting to talk about it with, with the students. And to their credit, they said, well, why are there, why are there fees? Why are there fees for this? And we explained why there are. And then they came back and they said, you know what, we understand it, it's, it's better than the, than the alternatives. The only thing that they requested was a universal cap. They loved, they loved the idea of the universal cap. And I think that's part of our civics project is to push us to.
Did you feed them that?
I did that. I did not. I said, we're considering it. I said, this is something we, we've considered and talked about, but.
This is my great idea and the rest of them were a little slow on it.
But it was.
Really trying to push it.
It was interesting that they were, they cared about the questions and they were asking, but then they, they heard it and said, you know what, you're right, we wouldn't, wouldn't want to cut these things, we wouldn't want larger class sizes, we wouldn't want these other things. And, but it was a great opportunity, I mean, one of the more fun things that I've done this year.
It was great.
You know, just hearing, you know, students that care about these issues and, yeah, it was a great opportunity to talk to them, so.
It was great.
Yeah.
I've met on everything from feminine hygiene products to school safety to, you know, budgets. It's, it's been really great to have all these civic action, just like you see students here tonight presenting, it's great. We're really building their capacity to be active participants in local government, so it's great. Okay.
The administrative report. Any other, any correspondence?
None at this time.
I literally have a high school talk there, so.
We, we did have a request to put something on an agenda. I don't know if, is that in correspondence? Did you want to speak about that or?
I mean, I can speak about it. I, I haven't seen it yet, but, you know, there was a parent that requested something, you know, to go on the, on the agenda, but just typically the way that a request has to be made to the superintendent at least 10 days before the agenda is, or before the meeting, the chair would then review it and determine, determine whether it's appropriate to be on there. And so we've had requests before and a lot of the time they are, they're requesting things that are not within our power to do anything about. And so I typically would not put something like that on the agenda. And so I think the subject matter of this one is similar in that it's essentially requesting something that is not the way that Dr. Daly's choosing to handle it. And so I don't think if it's something that's in Dr. Daly's, you know, decision-making that we should publicly, you know, go through those issues and, and ask him publicly to say, why, why are you not doing this, why are you doing that? I think that undermines superintendent. And so I haven't seen the actual request and so I don't want to say yes or no to anything.